We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting, and if I can get everybody to stand, we'll have an invocation. Most gracious heavenly Father, today we're extremely thankful. We're thankful for so many things in our lives. We're thankful that we have people that are serving our country, that protect our freedom, guarantee our right to be here. We are thankful for this community, and we're thankful for the people that live here. We hope that you'll watch after them and keep them safe. We're thankful for the staff and for all of the city employees. We ask that you watch after them, especially those that need your close watch and your tender care. We just ask that, or we just tell you that we're thankful for this council, and we ask that you watch over us tonight as we do the best things for the city. In Jesus' name we ask, amen. Let the record show that we have a quorum tonight, and we'll call a meeting to order. And Councilman Davis will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is at this time in our meeting when we're always glad to welcome visitors and receive public comments. We're glad that everybody's here tonight. Mary, it's good to see you. And Gil, we're glad you're here. Ms. Merritt, we're glad that you're with us tonight. And Rini, it's good to see you. And Joe, it's good to have you. Nice to have all the staff here tonight. And Audia, it's good to see you too.
Nice to be here.
At this particular time of our meeting, we want to welcome any public comment that anyone has to make. I think, Melba, I think you had some things that you wanted to say. We'll give you a short period of time here to...
I do have several ideas. They're not really in the works yet, but it's around town. I've been here since 7th grade, Class of 53. We're looking forward to reunion. And one thing we were interested in was having Old Pete ready to receive guests. And I think the Chamber of Commerce and possibly the city may work together on that. I haven't followed up on it, but we definitely need to do a lot of things in our community. And the grounds down there, the flower boxes, everything, I hope we can have that ready. We have a lot of visitors that stop there. I started watching, and there's often an out-of-state car in front of Old Pete. He's quite an institution, and I said, "All of our class reunion will want to have their picture made with Old Pete," I'm sure. And Old Pete will be celebrating his 50th birthday on July the 4th. And we need a birthday party down there. So I think we can all work together on that. On our 100th birthday of Mule Shoe, I had the opportunity to build about a five-foot birthday cake, wood, in my barn. And I've got it repainted, red, white, and blue, for Old Pete's birthday cake. If you need it, I want to decorate that. And so I think we could do a lot of things with that. I think we need to encourage churches, organizations, everybody to get in the parade. Mule Shoe has a lot to be proud of in Bailey County. And some things on my list, just for the public, is, well, like our heritage center out there. We have about 15 buildings. And I know I always went by and looked at the James Ranch house, and I wish I could see inside there. But they're gonna be open all day on the 4th. So we'll have that opportunity to see. And I made another suggestion. I said, "I wish we could get some of our older citizens to dress the part and be there, maybe to welcome guests." But that's just an idea. This is all just ideas, and me as a citizen, and I worked with the Jenny Slippers all those years. Another thing we're doing is putt. The Jenny Slippers are having to give that up. I think Cowboy Church had asked one time about it a while back. And I don't know what's come of that. The county owns that, but it does need new carpet and some help down there to get that going for our kids. And I thank the city. You put a new roof on the Girl Scout building. Yay! We appreciate that. And one of the workers on there, when I went down there, that came out and said, "When are you opening putt? We want to get the kids out there to play." And I said, "Well, we're working on it." We hope someone takes it and takes it to heart. So, and then our big parade, of course, you already said. I already told you that I'd like to see a lot of people, a lot of participation in that, and to be proud of. After all, God bless America. This is what we need to celebrate in our hearts. And at the big city park, we've always had a music night. Of course, I love country/western music. And then we'll have the fireworks. But we haven't had the opportunity and participation. But Regina tells me that they're in the process of trying to get music in the park for the 4th. And, well, that's one page, but I'll stop right there. But it's wonderful to be still in Mule Shoe, still seeing good things happen. Appreciate the council and all you do for our community, and we depend on you. And the Jenny Slippers are still kicking. I'd love to see new women join. And I asked one lady, I said, "Join the Jenny Slippers." And she said, "I thought about it, but I thought it was an old ladies' club." I said, "We weren't always old. So everybody that wants to work and loves Mule Shoe, join the Jenny Slippers." We're still doing everything we can for Mule Shoe, and we love Mule Shoe. And thank you. You probably never gave me a chance to talk again, but I do thank you. And an opportunity to be here with all of you and to tell you thank you for all you do. And it takes all of us. There's no sitting down place when you love town and you can see things to do. I talked with Colt a little bit, and I talked with one of the members, Todd Shipman. I think he's gonna do some work down there with Old Pete, and we'll have Old Pete ready for company. And we're glad for that. I mean, we fought for him, so let's keep him looking happy. And that's all for this time, but thanks for letting me talk to you and to the public. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate all the things you've done for the community over the years and still doing. You always have some good ideas.
Thank you. I debated, and I thought, "Oh, well, no, I don't find a sitting down place. I don't enjoy that." I'd rather get out and, I don't know, whatever I can still do, I'm doing it.
It's nice to have you, and I think y'all ought to work real hard at rejuvenating the Jenny Slippers and getting some younger members, because that's always...
We have a good time. And like our Class of 53, we've been there all five years until our 50th. We had so much fun, and they said, "Let's meet every year," and we have. So this is what, 63? We've got a bunch coming in. They expect to see Mule Shoe looking happy.
It's gonna be nice to have a birthday party too, and there's lots of people coming to the reunion.
Oh, yes.
There's lots of discussion about that.
Oh, yes. And, you know, some of them haven't been back in a long time. And we need a good parade, and we need the fireworks, we need some music, we need Old Pete's birthday party, and all those things. There's still so many good things to be thankful for here.
Lots of things to do here. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any public comment that they would like to make? If not, we're gonna move on into our agenda. First thing that we would like to do is to have a public hearing, receive public comment in regards to granting a variance to Lowe's supermarket concerning the distance requirements as set forth in ordinance number 0478 day 0515. I'll open the floor for that public hearing. If there's no one here that wants to make any comment about that, then we'll move on to the next thing on our agenda. We'd like to approve the minutes of the May 18th meeting of this year. And I trust you all read those and reviewed them, and I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any discussion in favor, say aye. If both know, motion carries. Next thing we would like to consider is a variance request from Lowe's supermarket concerning the distance requirements as set forth in ordinance number 0478 day 0515. And because of that discrepancy of the present store and the store property, they have requested that variance. So David, you have some comments you might want to make?
I just think the ordinance that the council adopted at the last meeting provides a number of reasons that the council can give a variance to those distance requirements. And I think Lowe's certainly meets several of those requirements. One is, because it caused a competitive disadvantage. And I think that distance very well may cause a competitive disadvantage. So let me get clear. Does it have to be 300 feet from the building or from the property?
For schools, it's measured from property line to property line. If you measure from the property line of Lowe's to the property line of the property where the school facilities are, it gets outside of that 300 feet. But the school owns that vacant lot that comes up to the...
To the north.
...B, and that's within 300 feet.
Right. So the actual building itself is outside the 300 feet?
Yes. The current facilities are outside of 300 feet. They're 460 from property line to property line.
Any other questions about the variance? If not, I'll make a motion to approve that variance.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both know? Motion carries. And Rini, I want to tell you thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate that you guys being a part of the community. And keep up the good work.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Next thing we would like to do is to consider a lease agreement for city-owned property. I guess you all reviewed those leases. Do we have any questions or comments about those leases?
I think that it still needs to be considered. Well, and some bugs worked out. I found some things in there that I think could still be worked on. Specifically, I'd like to have some more time to go through it and pick through it a little bit more before we go through with, you know...
And I don't have a problem with that. There is gonna be a little time issue. We're gonna have that ready to, enough time to submit or solicit bids and receive bids. It's gonna be ready to do that all this Thursday first.
I have a few issues with those lease agreements also. If y'all want to take time, we can kind of work through some of those if you'd like to.
That's a little bit. I think everyone's here for it.
Okay. You want to start? You want me to start?
I can start because mine's pretty short.
Okay.
Are you gonna start with a particular agreement first, or you're talking in general?
In general, about both leases.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and I asked while you were out, my concern is with both leases, the old airport as well as the stuff south of town that has been combined. I still think that there needs to be a, without a doubt, termination date. After so many years, this is gonna come open for bid, period. Last meeting, I set a five-year minimum. After talking to some citizens, they, some seemed to think that five years was too short. So I would be open to six, seven, eight-year guaranteed termination of the lease.
That was a blank that was left in there for the council to make that decision. The way this is written, and Slater and I spent a good bit of time talking about this, if you're setting a five-year lease, or a six, or a eight, or whatever, it's pretty much a lease that long. This, and this is certainly a council's discretion. But we put in there that after that lease, that time period that the council sets, the council, that the council's option can extend that year-to-year. My concern was, I didn't want to tie the council to where they didn't have any options.
Is there no way to amend and extend the lease at both parties' discretion after your termination?
Well, I understood what you were saying, that this termination, we rebid it after that period of time. And the thought that I had, if we end up with another four-year drought, and we're three years into it, and this expires, there may not be the market for that lease that there would be if we'd been through a normal rainy period or maybe even a rainy year.
I agree with it.
I just hate to see that. My concern was that the council gets tied without any options.
But at the same time, I see that in the last five years, what land values have done in and around Mule Shoe has gone out the roof, especially rurally. And those numbers are gonna change from year to year. And you can also tie yourself down so much that you can't follow land values in that council.
Well, I mean, Slater and I agreed that this is written where if you wanted an eight-year, then at eight years, the council says, "We're reading it," period. But it also gives the option for the council to say, "I'll wait over here a year."
That's my little bit of concern. If we can put a number in that blank before it's provided to the bid submitter...
But are you talking about doing away with the year-to-year option?
I want to keep the 90-day...
Yeah, the 90-day...
...termination option, because things happen. But I believe it needs to be, at this point, able to be completely open back up.
Able to be or required to be?
Able.
That's what's in here.
Okay.
I read...
What does it say?
Yes.
Okay.
It says it's a five-year lease, or whatever term the council sets. And it's end of that lease, council's option, or if we should agree, then it can go year-to-year.
So I guess then, on this point, what we need to decide is the number of years.
The number of years.
The minimum, yes.
In other words, if you lease whatever to whoever, at the end of lease period, if you have a good tenant and you want to keep them, and they're satisfied with what the prices are, the lease agreement, then you can continue that without starting over and opening it up.
Right.
I think that's very important.
Yeah. I think it's a good thing to have.
And that, if we, we talked about, we both thought we kind of got directions to set a definite end date to the lease. But Slater and I were both concerned about tying the council where they didn't have any options at that end date. That's what we tried to put in there, was, after the end date, you've got a good, everything's going well, you've got a good person there.
And if, at the end, let's just call it five years is free. At the end of five years, if we decide that the lease amount needs to increase for that year-to-year thing, can we do that, or do we have to...
I think if you're gonna change the lease, then you have to rebid. Am I correct?
If you're gonna change the material term, and like a lease rate, yeah, absolutely, it's gonna be...
I would think so too, because the city can't actually raise the lease rate. It's got to be bid.
It's gonna be at a fair market value.
As long as we have that option, that's my only concern with that.
And that's what we tried to put in there.
And the other concern that I still have, council talked about allowing the hunting. I think it needs to be completely at the person who leases the property's discretion. If he wants nobody to be out there, that's at his discretion. If he wants to sublease it to someone, he should have that discretion. And I still think that no rifle hunting, period.
Okay. And that's, when I started looking at that section, and we talked about bird hunting, maybe be okay, and concerned about how close it was to town. I know through the years, because of the prairie dog population down there, we've had a lot of garment hunters down there. That's the only reason I put that in there. You want it out, that's out.
I think they need to take the 22, bring it out.
Okay. And that's, I don't have a problem with that.
There are a lot safer ways to control prairie dogs.
But it will be at the leasee's discretion. Yeah. We're not, we're not gonna lease this to somebody, and then the city turn around and lease it to somebody else to go hunting.
If the less see wants no one out there hunting, he should have that option.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah. So you want, is it, the council telling me, consent of the council, that you want bird hunting with a shotgun on it?
I think that would be the safest way to do it. Yeah, 22s is anything.
I don't know that anybody does it or would care to. What about bow hunting?
That's fine.
I mean, I don't see a problem with it, because you're not talking about range there either.
I think it, no rifles, and you leave it open to anything else, pistols or bows. But I think you better get specific with that stuff.
I would.
But, you know, that could be right up against a house with a bow and arrow. It'd be just as unsafe as a 22 on the south side of the property.
I would, I think. I would just talk about, you said, "No rifles."
Say that again.
I would just point out, you're talking about no rifles. And that has to include pistols also. Because they can shoot the cars a rifle.
I think shotgun only.
So I think maybe we could say shotgun and bows.
Only shotgun only.
I think you're gonna have to go shotgun only, but you're also gonna have to stipulate in there no rifle slugs, because they do have the range. And that's...
Just bird shot, shotgun only.
I guess an issue would get to be how we enforce that also.
I would keep the game wardens on page. They're here during hunting season, and they can enforce it. And just tell them, you know, they'd be glad to drive through there. If you tell them, "Keep an eye on this property," they'll cover it up.
Okay. We'll find a way to work that.
I've got jurisdictional questions on the game warden.
They don't have any.
But I don't know that the city wants to get involved. I don't know. I need to noodle on that.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I'm not sure the city wants to be the enforcement.
Then the only enforcement mechanism, I think, we would have, would say that's a violation of the leasing. It's terminated.
I mean, you'd actually have to catch the person that's either leasing or subleasing. Doing that. Now, if somebody else is out there hunting, and they didn't have permission, then they're already in trouble anyways, and they don't even have anything to do with the lease.
Right. But it could be that Ramon's guys drive down there and they're out shooting. I mean, we're, because we go well down there. We're down through that area.
But they shouldn't be doing that.
I understand. How do you enforce that? That's the question we're asking.
I think it could be handled okay.
Tell us how.
Well, you call the game warden. They have the right to trespass there.
So if one of Ramon's guys drives down through there, and somebody's shooting prairie dogs with a 22, then we call the game warden?
Well, I don't think they have the right to be doing that. If you leased that property, and the leasee has complete control of the property, the animals that are there are the hunting. I don't think the city guys can be out there shooting.
No, I'm not talking about city guys shooting. I'm talking about city guys going down there and seeing somebody else.
Then they need to just call the game warden.
Call the guy that has it leased.
Call the leasing, yeah.
Or be in there doing what we do and getting shot.
Just to be one?
Well, that gets a bit old there, I think.
I think that should be the responsibility of the leasee to enforce that.
Well, I agree with this. I just, I'm trying to think through...
See, that's another reason why the shotgun-only thing is better, because of his being out there from time to time. It makes it safer for them.
We're out there every day. We're out there every day, two or three times a day.
So that's another reason not to have rifles or pistols up there shooting.
Okay. We'll, we're gonna work that, okay?
Okay. One of my concerns starts with the South Well Field. On the old leases, on the water usage, the stock water for the farm animals was furnished for livestock water. And the leasee only kept up the tanks and the floats and stuff?
On that 93 lease?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Now, I can understand the difference in the one out at the airport.
Yeah. We're talking about treated water out there.
Right. So that would...
But when we redid the lease, when we bought that new property in 2001, and did the lease there, and I think we furnished 3,000 gallons, and then charged them for everything after that.
Yeah. But I think that 3,000 gallons was per year on that lease.
I guess, the question is, what would you like for it to be?
Well, to me, since it's a dryland farm, and the greatest income from that place is grazing, then I think we should work with them somehow, whoever's got it, somehow in the water out there.
Okay. Now...
3,000 gallons a year, or per month. But I don't see charging everything over 3,000 gallons at the city rate. I pretty much think you should furnish the water for livestock only.
And part of it, don't we have a well down there?
And we do.
We do. That's not...
On the Xanderosa Well Field, there's two stocking wells.
There's two domestic wells.
Small wells for stocking. That's all they serve.
And that's where the old lease is.
Okay. So you do furnish those, the livestock water.
The water on the other part comes out of the transmission line.
Another one of my concerns is on the airport property, on the number six, the stocking rate. Since that's an irrigated farm, and there could be the potential of some concentrated grazing, I think we need to eliminate the fact that we're telling them how many cattle they can put on there. And I think it needs to be usual and customary grazing practices. Because if I have a wheat crop out there, or anybody does, and they want to graze it, plant a hay grazer behind it, you can't do that. One head, they're 25 acres.
Okay. And that's, those are things that I don't know so much.
On the well field, I think those limitations that are listed there, where one cow or calf for 25 acres, I think that's a reasonable number. And I think they can work real well with that.
You think in the well field lease, the stocking rates are okay?
Right, because that's dryland property, and that's about what natural pasture runs at. But I think on the airport, I think they should be able to have usual and customary grazing practices at their discretion.
Okay. And I guess, back to the water, maybe I wasn't clear on...
The water out at the airport?
No, no. Out there, out there, right.
Okay. So the water and the Xanderosa?
Yes.
You furnish those two domestic wells?
Yes, on the Xanderosa. There's not... There's not, that's not, there, we have other water outlets on that newer park.
Right. Is that water billed? Is it metered from the two domestic wells?
Not on that. The one that's metered is on the new 600 acres.
Yeah, that's where it's metered. Where it comes out of the transmission line. We're not metering it out of that.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's good.
So.
Now, another one of my.
I guess I'm not clear yet. You want no, no charge for water?
No. If you furnish two domestic wells on the Xander Rosa, then that, I think that's good for grazing. If they require water that comes out of the transmission line, I can understand that being metered.
Okay.
I did not realize there were two wells out there.
Yeah. They're on the Xander Rosa and that's the reason that there wasn't a water charge on that old lease.
Okay.
You want 3,000 gallons per?
Well, no. A metered water, 3,000 gallons would be okay.
I bet metered water is just at standard rates.
At standard rates.
Okay. Okay, any metered water down there?
Okay. Another thing I think you should do is eliminate number 10, the liability insurance. I think number nine pretty much takes care of number 10.
That's an attorney, Dylan Slater, who added that to that.
Well, and, yeah. I think that's a property that's pretty hard to reach breakeven and by doing that, you almost make it something that's not doable.
On both properties?
No.
Well, I don't know. Would you say, I don't know.
I think on both properties.
I think that the city shouldn't think very hard about not requiring an insurance policy. No attorney anywhere ever is going to recommend you not be insured or covered through someone else's policy. There is a hold harmless feature in paragraph nine.
Right.
But if the lessie is holding harmless, if it has nothing to hold up as a shield, if they're essentially judgment proof, that doesn't really provide the city with any protection. You need a good law to hide behind.
What's the cost for a half million dollar liability insurance?
But if somebody gets down there with a 22 or a shotgun with a bird shot or a slug or a rifle and shoots somebody, the law that, that's plain it, it's going after these bodies.
Well, that's going to be the city anyway.
Yeah.
No matter what the leasing has.
But if we've got a half a million dollar insurance policy, they can save the city a half million dollars.
Yeah, but you know, I think you can get to the point where you're going to, it's going to cost the person that wants to bid on it so much money, they may not even be interested in bidding on it.
It turns into a reasonable analysis and requiring, I look at a lot of leases all the time and frankly, a $500,000 insurance policy is, in the grand scheme and the scale of leases, that's not very onerous in my mind. Of course, city can do what it wants.
There was nothing like that in any of the other leases.
No, but those are 23-year old leases.
Okay. The other question I have.
So are we, could we be correction on what we did?
It's just my opinion, I don't think we need it.
Okay, but I need, I need, I need the consensus of the council to tell me what to do.
I'm thinking as a council, we need to, we pay for legal advice. And legal advice is telling us, keep it there.
Absolutely. Does anybody know what a half million dollar liability policy would cost for the lessie? I'd like to have a.
I would, I wouldn't know, but I wouldn't.
You know, if it's $50,000 a year, you're never going to get anybody to sign up.
Oh, well.
But if it's $500 a year, you might. So we kind of need to have a ballpark on that information.
This is going to sound crass and I don't intend it to sound this way, that there's no way, but that's the lessie's problem. We're here for the city and I think letting the city, exposing the city that way is, is not giving any color about it.
I think, I have no idea what the price is either, but I don't believe it will be cost prohibitive. I don't know, but I don't believe it will be.
So would the lessie have to have proof of insurance in his sealed bid or how would that work?
They would have to get it before they take the property, they'd have to present us a copy of the policy with us named as an insurer.
Without waiting in expiration?
Yes.
During the terms of the.
Yes.
Which would become a reason for termination.
Yes.
I'm just going to Google a little bit, same anywhere between $400 and $600 a year. So say let's anchor it, let's just figure it out. I think it's like he said, we're, we're out for the best interest of the city.
Yeah.
That's right.
And if it saves us one way or another, keep it.
With the consensus, do you leave it in there?
Leave it in.
Leave it in there. Another simple question I had was in, in these lease agreements, it says that the fences will be maintained in the same shape they're in when the leasing takes over?
What if they're wrecked? Well, that's, that's the reason there's the opportunity to keep them, inspect those fences prior to that.
And it also says that they, the leasing will leave those as they found them whenever they actually leased the property.
And I think for the most part, there's a piece of the fence down here that probably needs some work done.
Along the highway, yeah. Part of it laying on the ground.
Allen keeps up with most of that. Allen's told me those fences are horrible.
One time they weren't.
But that's, yeah, I mean, and then maybe that we have to do a little work down there prior to the leasing moving in. If the fences will stay better if the leasing required to keep them up, otherwise we'll be down building fence all the time.
Well, I mean, I'm sure everybody knows, price cattle, they don't want them out. They better maintain their fences.
I helped put 20 head back in off the highway this morning and that was like nearly $100,000. He didn't want them on the highway. Okay, that's the issues I had.
So I still think it brings us back to the first point, how many years will they ever set? My guess, still minimum of five.
I think five years are a good start since we have the year-to-year option.
Let me throw this in, the Wildlife Refuge is the same, similar type of lease program. They do them every three years. They used to do them every five. They do them every three now. I kind of like the number five.
I would say five to seven. After talking to some of the people who had some interest, a lot of them thought that five years was way too short. And like David said, you know, you, sometimes it's hard to get everything in and get settled in five years.
If you have a five-year lease and four of them drought.
I think you just got to deal with that.
Well, and you may have to, but, and I'm.
I have one other question. Is it a problem to require the lease payment at the end of the year?
Well, and you'll notice I put in there, and I was going to bring that up if y'all didn't talk about that, that the rentals are payable either monthly, quarterly, or.
Or annually.
Annually or biannually.
It also says in there, in advance.
In advance.
That's a pretty tough deal.
Sometimes it's pretty tough at the end, too. I, I mean, I, that's, that's.
I wouldn't have any problem with making it at the end of their cava year or the hay bale in year, something like that. That's how agriculture operates all over, is when you get your crop, you pay your loan back.
I don't know of any agriculture lease where you pay for it all in advance.
Now, we're going to have to have, I think, the city a date.
I mean, for me personally, if I'm keeping up that, I don't know when that is. So I don't know when that would be.
When the end of hay.
To me, if the lease begins August 1st, then when can it be August 1st, 2016?
I guess one thing that kind of concerned me, what Matt said, that's when the note comes due, that makes us a banker.
Yeah.
Exactly. We're loaning that money to the year. I'm thinking when the note comes due, they borrow the money and then the note comes due and they pay it. But we get, get paid from the money they borrow.
That's just not the way standard agricultural leasing works.
That's, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever.
I think we would, we should have a minimum payment frequency with 100% due yearly. If you have a minimum once a year payment, a minimum quarterly payment. To me, there needs to be some sort of good faith payment.
What about a bank? Halfway through the year, you pay half of it. At the end of the lease, you pay the rest of it before.
I'd like to see some sort of good faith payment with, with a.
Well, I think a good faith payment needs to have a percentage or a dollar amount or something.
Oh, yes.
I think 50% halfway through, 100% at the end.
So 50% of the lease would be due six months from the date of signing.
Or 25% upfront, 100 at the end. You know, I think you've, you've got to wa, you know, the ultimate goal of this is to have someone come bid a lot of money on the city's property and it needs to benefit us the way that we outline these leases, but it doesn't need to benefit us so much that it makes no one want to walk in here and submit a bid. And I think by, by catering to our needs too much, it could hinder the ultimate goal of the deal is to make it profitable for everybody.
Those are better pets. It's been a month to month, any times.
Recently?
No, it's still due month to month.
And I think that was, that was their choice, I think, whenever they began that.
Yeah, and that, that was a kind of another question I had when we solicited bids, do we give some options for the leasing? How do you want to pay it? Do you want to pay it month to month? Do you want to pay it annually? Do you want to pay it?
My best idea is a, a small good faith payment upfront with the rest due in full at the end of the year.
Unless I wanted to pay monthly, I'd be certain.
Is the lease likely?
25% on trade?
I'm thinking 25%.
I completely understand where you guys are coming from. A farmer wants to rent his property to make money. Well, as he rents his property, then he harvests his crop and then he pays the bills.
That's the way it works. It's not going to help him whether it's, anything before the crop or the cattle come off is a burden. I, my best idea, what I'd like to see is a 25% good faith payment upfront with the other 75% or the full balance due at the one-year anniversary of the lease.
And if they wanted to do month to month, you have the option of month to month.
Pay as often as you want, 25% upfront, the other 75% at the end of the year.
Body of the.
Yes.
Five years? Okay, yeah, then, I guess that's a good question. That's year one, so year two?
That would be each year.
Well, that's going to be 100% that they have to pay on August 31st. 75% from this year and 25% for the next year.
Yes.
So what about after the first year, they don't pay monthly or 100% at the end of the year?
I would keep it that way every year.
But if they 25%, then they pay 100%. Then they say 100%.
Until they pay 75% at the end of the year? Unless we go on month to month, year to year.
Well, I think we put it in, I think we can put it in this way and if they want to make those payments monthly, as long as they make the 25% upfront.
Yeah. I think you pay as often as they want, as long as they follow these guidelines.
As long as it's paid by the one-year anniversary. And by the time one-year anniversary, they pay the other 75% plus the 25% for the next year.
I think that benefits both the both parties. We need to consider enforcement of this stuff. What, what kind of tolerance are we, are we going to have? If they have a bad year, are we going to terminate the lease? Are we going to be lenient with them? This, this still needs to be run like a business and are we going to charge interest on late fees? Interest on late payments, late fees, how are they going to be? Because we don't need to get deep in a deal. I don't know what's allowable or what we want to do, but something needs, they need to have some motivation to pay.
About 30 days and then the lease terminates if it's not paid in full?
I think that's plenty, if not on the date, because if you wait too long, you're not going to give, if you terminate the lease too long after that, you're not going to give somebody else the opportunity to start over.
I agree. I think 30 days from the due date, if it's not, if you don't have your 25 or 75 paid in full, it's time to find someone else.
Best to put a 30-day grace period.
But I think the initial 25% good faith payment, they shouldn't be able to inhabit the property until that one is collected.
When the lease begins.
Yeah, the initial was due on the spot.
Yes. What would we need to do to see on the updated lease with those changes in, in time to?
Yeah, the mayor has talked about a special meeting to do a budget workshop later in the month. We'll, we'll make these changes and get them out to the council and we could call that meeting. We can put that on the special meeting.
Because like you said, there is a timeframe for that.
Yeah, yeah. We would like to do that by the 20th, if that's at all. By the 20th of June? Let me, let me run over the notes that I made and make sure I got what. Let me run over the notes that I made and make sure I got what y'all talked about.
Sometime this week or sometime next week, except on Tuesdays.
I'm gonna be gone, I'll leave Wednesday of this week, I'll be back Sunday.
Okay. About, uh, the 15th, the 17th, 15th?
That needs to be something we have our city attorney present for, I think.
I'm sorry?
The city attorney needs to be present for that, I would think.
If you would, we can, I mean, the attorney will have us put this together. And we'll get this put together and get it out to you, hopefully before I leave tomorrow.
Does the
Because I don't think there's huge changes.
How about a week from tomorrow?
15th?
Thank you, lady. Everybody get here?
Yeah.
Anybody get me here?
Yes, yeah, I'll be back Sunday.
What time?
May I bear it?
What time?
Regular time, 5:30?
6:00, 6:30?
6:37. 6:30.
9:39. 6:30?
6:30, I can make it work.
6:30, okay.
Let me run this back and make sure we got all the notes. Bird hunting only with shotgun and bird shot. Bow hunting is allowed. Any water that we meter on either lease is at standard water rates. And then we do have the wells down there that are not metered. Stocking rate for the old airport is usual and customary.
Yeah, that just gives them a little option, you know, with it being irrigated?
Yeah.
Down south, I think what you got's good.
Yeah, and the irrigation, and we'll talk, is in your, that's subject to a lease to an agreement, a separate agreement that's written golf course. And with the understanding that golf course has priority use of that water.
And see, that also allows you to do your grazing in relation to the golf course agreement.
Yeah. Rentals are due 25% prior to taking over the property. 75% at the end of the first anniversary year, and then the same for each additional year. There's 25% at the front and 75% at the end. 30-day grace period to make those payments, and the lease is terminated after 30 days.
How much time is typically given if we terminate the lease after 30 days? Do they have a vacate program? And get other equipment and whatever else?
I see this deal is three days.
Okay.
Well, that was a pretty
I was thinking five, I didn't know.
There was a history to that.
Well.
I think five is, it would be very reasonable.
Is that? The only thing it might be if there was hay on the ground out here and it was wet or something.
And they can't even get the hog until the tournament finishes.
Right. Yes, yeah, prior to taking the program, it's 25%. Okay, miss anything?
Okay, next thing we'd like to do is to consider receipts from Mioshi Road Riders for hotel motel tax funds for motorcycle route. We had approved up to $2,000 for this event, and they submitted receipts and the staff reviewed them in the amount of $1,608. I'll make a motion that we approve that amount.
I'll second it.
We have a second? Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is consider requests from Mioshi Youth Baseball for hotel motel tax funds for rookie tournament and major district tournament. And we have Mr. Garcia here, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Garcia, Joe. The, uh, we submitted a request for hotel motel tax funds in the amount of $7,000 for two baseball tournaments. And that helped you to pay what all expenses?
It helps pay field maintenance, like chalk and field conditioning. And I think in the past, it's helped pay with umpire fees and award fees. And I know it's not exactly, it doesn't amount to that much, but it's just a request that we, just to be on the safe side.
Y'all didn't have any tournaments last year, did you?
Yes, we had a Bay Ruth tournament, a rookie tournament, and minor district tournament.
I'm gonna click motion to approve that. I'll second it.
We have a motion and second to approve a request for funds in the amount of $7,000 for two baseball tournaments.
Mayor, would you consider doing those per tournament?
Per tournament?
They've requested for two different activities. So if you do that, if you do $7,000 in
You want us to do 3,500 for each tournament?
That's why the request
One of them can do 4,000 and one of them can do
Do you need it in two different motions?
No, it can be in one motion, but
But 3,500 per 3,500 for, per each tournament?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, so we did that motion. Okay, any discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no? Motion carries. Now, when are your tournaments?
Our rookie tournament is June 19th and June 20th. And our district tournament is July 10th, and so it could last three to four days.
It's my understanding, last time y'all did both of those tournaments, you had a lot of people came and stayed in town and
Yes, we held them actually on the same weekend, and if you were lucky enough, that one district tournament was gonna be pushed back two weeks.
How many teams do you expect?
The district tournament on July 10th, it's just depend on how you separate them, the north district and the south district. Just depend on where the commissioners decide. Our rookie tournament, we average eight to 12 teams.
That's good, that helps to rejuvenate the hotel motel tax fund. It's good for the community, we appreciate y'all doing it. Okay, any other questions about the comments? If not, the next thing we'd like to do is to receive the May 2015 financial statement, and I'm sure you all reviewed that line by line, and I'll make a motion we approve that financial statement. Do we have a second? Any rediscussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no? Motion carries. We would now like to have the administrative records.
Thanks, Mayor, we opened water park this week, opened on Tuesday, had 304 visitors that day. Ran close to 300, but not quite there until Saturday, I think we ran well over 300 that day. It's been well attended, everything's going really well. Got a lot of new employees up there, we got some veterans. So far, things are going really well. We, Saturday, we had kids fish down in the park. We had 97 registered kids to fish. They caught fish anywhere from inch and a half to 23 inches. I do wanna thank Jude Smith and Fish and Wildlife, they provide the fish for us every year. Appreciate the game wardens that come down here and put that on, we had a great time.
Big crowd.
Good crowd. And I saw at lunch today coming back, there were three kids leaving the park and one of them's carrying fish. At least 20 inches long.
See, all those people that graduated in the class of, what, 1953? Wouldn't believe that Mioshi has fishing tournament and we have a Lake Mioshi.
That they do what now?
They, those folks won't believe that we have a Lake Mioshi.
Oh, yes.
And that we have a fishing tournament, yeah, that's pretty cool.
That's fantastic.
It was a lot of fun. Kiel Mill Region Three Quarter Meeting will be Thursday, 2/25. Scotty Wright Learning Center, the 5:30, half the hours for a soda, 5:30 meal start around 6:30. That's always a good meeting.
That's not an holiday event, or is
No, no. No, it's just an evening.
Evening meeting?
I don't know what the, what code you're for. That could be used. Saying the other thing for the meeting next week, sit down and have a budget workshop. I don't know if the department heads here or not, this will be mostly to get input from the council, their thoughts on the budget. I've got a draft copy or a preliminary copy of the budget there. It's essentially the department head, the departmental request that we just put in the budget, and that's where we start from. So they're, all the requests submitted by departments have been put into that budget, they have not been adjusted, we've not talked about it. There is some minor adjustments in the property tax revenues based on the preliminary numbers that we've got from the appraisal district. There is a little increase in sales tax revenues based on the alcohol sales that we anticipate for next year. There are no salary adjustments in the preliminary budget that you have. However, there is an adjustment for health insurance, I think they went up 18% this year, so that number's already been put in. We got a little reduction on our retirement contribution rate. Anyway, look that over if you have any questions, please, and start to give me a call tomorrow. They have questions ready or answers ready for us Monday night. We'll take, the council stocks, we'll put that in with the department heads that have the question. We'll scrub that around some, then we'll have another budget workshop where we can present a more refined budget that the council can review. And at that meeting, we'll have the department heads here to justify their request.
Could you give us a quick update on the progress of some of the local businesses who have put in for alcohol sales? And when you see that happening?
Off the top of my head, and again, we had a very small part in that process. So if they come in and land us to sign off on the application that they're sending to the state, that this says they are in an area that's been voted wet. Stripes has been in, Hosses has been in, Seftco has been in, United has been in. We've been talking with Lowe's, they were waiting for, they had to wait for this meeting to make that happen.
So the rest is a
I'm sorry?
The rest is TABC guidelines and the timeframes?
Some of the timeframes that we're hearing, some are saying they're gonna have sales ready by July 4th.
I'm sure there's about 160 citizens that are excited.
I don't know the answer to that. But
Do you, uh, I don't know if you wanna update everybody on the fire truck mishap last week?
We did have an accident with a fire truck.
Everybody's okay?
Everybody's okay, fire department was responding to a fire south of town. We don't have the police report yet, we've not filed anything of insurance. So pretty much what I can tell you, they come together with a semi truck at the crossroads and the fire truck turned over. Nobody was hurt. It looks like a lot of damage to the fire truck, we haven't had an adjusted look at it.
It was the second newest truck, brush, the big brush truck, you call a big brush truck?
Yes.
Luckily, nobody was hurt.
Nobody was hurt. Yes. And that's all I have.
Thank you. You have counsel, anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, wanna thank everybody again for being here, and we're adjourned.